Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we appreciate everyone for joining today. Just as a reminder, if you're in the audience today, if you've got your phones on, just put them on silent, please. If you're attending via the go-to meeting, just make sure your phone's on mute until you're called upon. I will start with attendance. So supervisors physically present is Supervisor Welsh, Supervisor Tinkle, myself, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Geppert, and online, we've got Supervisor Guy. I just need a motion to allow special circumstances for Bill to join.
Second.
First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Also in attendance-
Thank you.
District Council, District Manager, Assistant District Manager. And Stephen, are you on from Tetra Tech?
Did you pick up a little bit? I can barely hear you.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi with Tetra Tech. I am here.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. All right, we will open up with public comments. Yes, sir.
Before we start, we could approve an amended agenda before we get to the audience public comments.
Okay.
I think we would hand it out for a couple of weeks.
Is that this one? Is there a difference between these two?
It adds, I think it adds the term sheet. Is that correct for the law or not?
You have to bend it down.
It looks like it's the same.
Does it add a term sheet for the law on this?
My copy looks the same, Tony.
I guess if we can amend the agenda to add discussion of term sheet from First Horizon Bank, I guess. Laura, did you have to hand out or send to the board members?
I did send it out, yeah.
Okay. We may want to print out an extra, but that was a, we could add that as a discussion item, an agenda item.
Okay.
And that would be under, I would suggest, action items under, I'll make it 4G.
4G.
George, I would suggest.
And the, it would be terms. What's the official?
Term sheet, First Horizon Bank.
Okay.
Do you all have that or a hard copy?
I got electronic.
Yes.
I didn't get a hard copy.
Doug, I would also like that since we have a workshop that is going to be on a pretty interesting issue, that those that chose to speak, that are speaking about that, wait till that period comes up rather than doing now. And then we have two hours, three hours waiting for the, to try to remember what somebody said.
Yeah, so we will allow public comments prior to the PONs workshop, which will tentatively is scheduled 5:15. Well, hopefully we'll be able to stick to that schedule, maybe even ramp it up a little bit. So if you have, if you choose to hold your comment until we open up the workshop, we will do that. Of course, if you'd like to go ahead and get your comments out, because you may not stay the whole time, you're welcome to that as well. So we've added 4G per councils.
Does anybody need a hard copy of that?
Why don't you-
I'm sorry?
A hard copy?
Of the term sheet.
Do you want, does anybody, anyone need me to print that out for them?
I think I brought it with me.
Yeah, I'd like a copy. I got it electronically.
Are you gonna, just go ahead and print two out. And then we'll go ahead. Chris, we'll roll into public comments.
Okay, we just have one speaker registered, Mr. Rod Senior.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, fellow residents. Rod Senior, Gateway Greens. Want to talk about the proposed park survey results, but first let me, I know that we've got the budget behind us now. I just want to thank the Board and Stephen Bloom for getting behind the initiative to shift a substantial amount of money out of the proposed 22 budget into capital. It was the right thing to do. And Doug, you're the chair. You know, I've heard you say a lot of times that you wanted to establish a high watermark. You know, it's a bit, it's a bit like the three and a half trillion dollar deal in Washington, you know? It's not a question just of setting a high watermark and then climbing down. I think that it was, I was surprised that this 103% budget, the way it initially was, was allowed to be sent out to the community at large and cause so much consternation. I hope that we've learned a lesson from that for the next time around. But now that budget's behind us, I do want to talk about the park. We have the survey results. The key thing that I want to talk about is the way in which they're communicating to the community. The highlights, just a couple of highlights that struck me in the face. Eighty-nine percent of the 900 respondents, which is about 20% of the 4,500 ERUs, that's significant statistically. Eighty-nine percent want no increase in assessments at all. I don't, I mean, how much of an O do you want that to spell out? No. Ditch the entire project. We want a referendum. That's what is being said. Fifty percent of the community want nothing to do with the community center, bandshell or pavilions. Fifty-seven percent want no sports facilities. Many saying that they wouldn't have bought here if they needed those. Others saying they will sell up because they're retired. Sixty percent don't want anything to do with a new family pool with lap lanes and seating. That's 60%. There needs to be an extra question when it's appropriate and ask people if they actually want the existing pool if there are no user fees going to be attached. Do they really want to carry on without user fees? In other words, everybody pays a $300,000 operating cost. That would be an interesting question to ask and an even more interesting answer to get, rather than just hearing from the noisy few that want the pool. Fifty-three percent don't want a fitness trail. Sixty-three percent don't want a children's playground. Many of the people understandably saying, what about perimeter fencing? What about access control technology? We're seeing condoms and needles at the fun park. Well, of course, the whole facility would need perimeter fencing and access control technology. That doesn't seem to have been brought out to the community, and that's a huge ongoing cost and capital cost. My point in all this is that I think that in some shape or form that this board could support, it does need to come out to the community in such a way that this thing is put to bed once and for all, in my opinion, in the form of a referendum. Now, a referendum is not easy to, is not an easy process to adopt. One idea that you might want to consider or make a motion on is to reach out to the, I think you call it a president's council, the 51 HOA presidents, and ask them, give them the results in a summary PowerPoint format that's easy for them to communicate to their communities in the form of an email. They do have their own email blast they can use. Let those presidents come back to this board with an up or down vote, with a definitive answer. And I think you'll find if those results that I've just relayed to you are indicative of what the presidents are going to vote on, and five of them did say at the Stony Brook meeting, they want nothing to do with this park, then if that's indicative, then I think it will stop this untimely and foolish adventure. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, anyone else?
No, that's all the public speakers, and we did not have anyone online that wanted to comment.
Right, okay. So moving into staff reports, we'll start with council.
Number one, the request we have from Lee Health, the attorney with regards to newly acquired property, Gateway Boulevard, Sony building to not impose any assessments. I've asked the attorney for additional documents about that transaction. He has provided some of the documents. I've had time to view them, so I was hoping to get the memo by this board meeting, but I'll have it by the next board meeting. Just my recommendation would be that. And it appears that they are not planning on leasing it out to anybody else, using it for their IT and other services, but I still want to verify that.
Well, if they lease it, they-
That's a different story.
That's a different story.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure. Mark Ebelini's always been a straight shooter, but I just want to get that. He's taken minutes from Lee Health and talked about it. I just want to get some additional background. With regards to the, I'll call it the two pipes in Matarita Lake 56, it's tract D of Pelican Preserve, tract L. That was the issue with regards to the pipes not having flare end sections and one pipe being, I think, eight feet short. Stephen, is that correct, or Bob?
That sounds about right. It was eight, 10 feet.
I've been doing some digging, and we called last board meeting. My quick initial retrieval of documents reflected record drawings of 2010 and 11, and further review and retrieval of documents that submitted to the district for acquiring that infrastructure, I believe, was not until initially June of 2016, a resubmitment in May of 2017, and not accepted by the board until November of 2017. And so it appears that the discovery of that defect did not occur until June, July of 2020, is my understanding. And whether, in the 10 years of obviously, we argued that the 10 years started, the four years started when it was turned over to the district. They were well within that, so I'm preparing, and I asked Mr. Geppert briefly, confirm some information with Mr. Agapi. I'll be drafting that on the 5:58 demand letter, which is to add to the developer, and was WCI, the new entity, because in fact, they had to change some documents from June 2016 to May of 2017 to reflect the correct entity. And so I'll be preparing that. And I might need to also send a letter to, demand letter to Morris Riley, who did some videoing of that and did not reflect any shortage on that piping. And also, and so there might be a number of parties I've sent that demand letter to, including the engineering firm for the developer who said, here's what you're getting. And in fact, received a report from Morris Riley. So that's in the works, and I wanted to have that done earlier, but it will be done in the next two weeks, that demand letter.
Could you tell, Tony, did Morris Riley physically, or have you talked to Morris Riley to know that they physically put a scale and/or put a measurement from the manhole to the structure, or was there an as-built drawing or something that gave them the impression that that was the number? Because I know back five, six years ago, when I worked with Morris Riley, we worked big time off of the drawings we had, and so consequently, the aerial photos we would get back from them would show a length and a diameter. Got to keep in mind both of them. A length and a diameter, and sometimes it was 24-inch, because it said it was 24-inch on the drawings. When you got into it, it may have been an 18, or it could have been a 36. Because you can't get down in there and do all of these. So I'm just wondering, was this a deal where somebody just copied what somebody else did, and it was in error to begin with?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, and I can't speak to that, but I know they videoed it. Somebody was physically on the ground, putting a camera through it.
Also, I know is my relationship with Morris Riley and the guys that were on that crew for a period of about three, four years of doing all that mapping were very, very accurate.
And so were ours, because I'll remind the board that they're the ones that found pipes under buildings and things like that, and pipes that didn't extend.
My only comment on that, and again, I can always call them up, but if they'll talk, but on the report, it's a Pelican Preserve, tract L, stormpipe inspection summary, December 2016. And for the segment for the, sort of short, and FES, it lists the pipe length, but then there's, it has no sediment buildup and algae at pipe end, 75% blockage. So obviously they went to the pipe end.
Yeah. Whether the end was where it should have been is maybe another question, but-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But remember-
It was the end, but it wasn't the real end.
Morris Riley was doing this at the behest of WCI and not the PONs work group, because that was a requirement due to the change in the permit criteria manual. So it's an appropriate question, boy.
And so again, I may send it out to Morris Riley and see what kind of response is back.
You knew it was on that. Do you have any recollection of who was on that crew?
No, because we didn't pay for it. I don't even know when we were there.
Okay, because I just had all the-
The earlier crews we were with handed it in.
They did a very good job when they were doing it for me.
We were handing it off, but because WCI, Lenar paid for it.
Yeah, could be a whole different deal.
And that's all I have. Working on issue, working with the staff, a number of other issues, including checking all the easements and the FPL easement with regards to the ability, a moment that Ms. Walsh has been asking. So I pulled a bunch of the easements. The question is, does the district have the, should we be maintaining that, mowing?
The FPL easement?
Yes.
We've been, I thought, having that as a part of our contract with Mainscape for umpteen billion years.
Yeah, I guess the question's come up with regards to what should be, not my topic, but I think by Mainscape.
That we should be doing, or that we, as I understood it, there was a time deal on it that, what was it, twice during the growing season and once during the non-growing season, some oddball deal. That was the number of times they were supposed to do it, and that at that time, it was an issue, are you doing it? So I thought it was surely contractual. They wouldn't do it for the hell of it.
Are you talking about contractual with our vendor?
Yes.
That's not what our contract says. It doesn't-
Does it require mowing of the FPL easement? Because it used to, and we paid them for it.
Well, they're mowing, yeah.
But it's not addressed in the contract?
It is, but not all parts of it. So that's why Tony's looking into it.
Well, obviously, you wouldn't mow the lakes, but what else wouldn't be mowed?
The northern section.
Yes, that's by Hampton Park and by-
Oh, you're talking about if you, as you cross Gateway Boulevard? I don't, I don't think that ever was transferred, so we wouldn't-
It's not transferred, or there's no, there's easements for that. That's what I'm looking to. Like drainage easements, you should still give it to the authority.
Don't know, don't know.
So I'll have that.
But that's, that is a mess.
It is a mess, and I think he needs to, like, Al, would you be able to clarify? I believe like the Hampton Park residents over there would like to have that cleaned up, and if it's, if it's our responsibility, then we just have to do it.
Al Harris, Gateway Services. We mowed the section that we have been mowing for many, many years along the asphalt path, because I, if I could be mistaken, but I believe I have seen documents pertaining to that particular area as a dedicated linear park. During the building of Gateway, they had to have X amount of acres of recreational space. That's one of them. That's a dedicated linear park for, for walking or bicycling or jogging or-
And then the reasoning why we weren't doing the other part is because there was no sidewalk, there was no asphalt, no nothing. But now there is.
Well, I never saw anything in all the times I've looked at that, and I agree with you on what you said, that defined a width.
Correct.
Nothing defined a width, but it does define that the FPL easement from Gateway Boulevard down to Griffin Drive is a part of the Gateway Park District.
Correct. I agree with that. So then we just need to, so then my interpretation after you review is that we need to go with Mainscape, we need to revise the part of the amendment, revise the contract and add those areas to be taken care of by them, because it's horrible.
So then that's part of the issue. I'm just pulling a number of easements with the territory.
I just, I can't believe that we have an agreement with somebody, especially when I'm talking about something that's 660 feet wide and 2,000 feet long, that when you're mowing it, there's a big difference between something that's 20 feet wide and something 660 feet wide. That's a lot of gas to do mowing. So what you're basically saying is, is that the contract does not stipulate what the acreage is to be mowed.
As far as I know, my correction?
Yes.
Yes. So, and I can tell you this, that we're being meeting with Mainscape, and I think that we, it will be need some revisions on both contracts, of Personatouch and Mainscape. And so I know Jim, and it's working on it, but he needs it, like, soon.
Yes, ma'am. And that's all.
He's so quiet.
Who's on first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll take over on first. Doug had to step out for a minute. We'll bring Tetra Tech up to discuss the Palazzo Way memorandum.
Good afternoon. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so this is the Palazzo Way Road Review. As you know, Palazzo Way, the HOA is currently operating, maintaining their roadway, and they approached the Board of Supervisors and asked if Gateway would take over ownership of the road for maintenance and responsibility. We were tasked with reviewing the road just to make sure that it was in compliance with construction best practices and any codes that, you know, are applicable to the roadway. So we went out there and did a review, and we reviewed the asphalt, the valley gutters, and the pavement markings. And before we did that, we contacted the engineer of record, and we asked for any inspection information they had relating to densities of the roadway or anything during construction. Unfortunately, they didn't have any records available. The engineer of record was RWA. We also went to the city of Fort Myers and looked up the permit. We tried to find inspection reports for the inspection of the roadway. We couldn't find anything pertaining to the actual roadway itself, but the permit was successfully closed out. In 2017, the last course of asphalt was installed, so the finished course is only about four years old. And there's been a couple repairs on the valley gutters, and it looks like those were repaired with the final lift of the roadway in 2017. I sent a report to Laura, and she should have distributed it to the Board of Supervisors, I think, yesterday. There's some photos in there showing just the typical state of the road. The roadway asphalt is in, in a pretty decent condition for its use and age. There's only one minor area where there's starting to show some cracking, but it's pretty superficial right now, and I would not repair it at this time. I would just watch it. It shouldn't cause an issue in the near, near term. The valley gutters, like I said, a lot of them had been repaired already. Usually, they're repaired in sections of a minimum of four feet, and when you do small repairs like this, they can deteriorate quicker. At this time, it's kind of just cosmetic, and I don't think they need to be addressed, but it, down the road, if there were heavy vehicles on this road, often it could cause a problem, but because this is a dead-end road, and the only heavy vehicles that are coming back here are trash pickup, and if someone's getting furniture delivered, it's not heavy traffic road, so it should be okay for the life of the, the road. There was one area that didn't get repaired, and that's shown on page three of our report. This is a crack, and it's showing some of the concrete is starting to crumble out, and we're recommending that that be cut out and repaired to the next hairline crack that's also there. Then the next thing we reviewed was the pavement markings. There is three crosswalks on the road, and there is a four-inch white stripe on both sides of the road. I'll start with the crosswalks. The westernmost crosswalk, it looks like it's been recently repainted, and it's in pretty good condition. I think we're okay on that one. The second crosswalk is, is starting to fade pretty bad, and it needs to be redone. I recommend using a thermoplastic pavement marking, which will last a lot longer than paint. This has only lasted about four years, so definitely needs to be redone. And on the northern side of this crosswalk, the ramp is not ADA compliant right now. They just have a standard valley gutter, which doesn't meet the ADA compliance for a 12 to 1 slope. So that needs to be addressed, if, you know, not by Gateway, but the HOA. There's another crosswalk, and I don't know why this one's here. It doesn't land like at a sidewalk. It starts in like a parking garage and then ends on the other side of the road at a handicap spot. And the paint is badly faded, and there's no ADA compliant ramps on either side. We looked at construction plans, and there's no planned crosswalk for this area, so I would recommend that this be removed since it doesn't meet ADA compliance. There was, however, another crosswalk that was called out on the plans that was not installed. It's shown on page four of our report, or I'm sorry, page six. It was supposed to start at a handicap parking spot and then go across Palazzo Way to a sidewalk that was never built. I don't know how they got the permit closed out without building this, but it's not there now, and I don't think it hurts to like not have it. So it's really up to Gateway or the HOA if they want to put it back in.
Stephen, do you think they just put it in the wrong place? I mean, is it that impossible?
You know, I don't know if they decided to move this one because it's easier and they didn't have to, like, if they put it where it needs to go, they'd have to knock down an oak tree, and there's a stop sign that's kind of conflicting. So maybe they thought this was like the compromise, but again, there's no ADA compliant ramps, so they kind of screwed up there. The four-inch white striping that's all the way around the road, it's pretty badly faded. I mean, there's some parts of the road where you can't even see it. It's just painted on, so, you know, it's going to fade pretty quickly. I asked around, and I can't find any requirement for this. I called the city, and they said if it was going to be turned over to the city, like if it was going to be a city street, this would be required to be installed. But since it's a private road, or Gateway's going to take it over, it's not required.
Stephen?
It's not, yeah, go ahead.
If I may, the important part is in chapter 190, it says, "The district has the ability to acquire, construct, et cetera, district roads equal to or exceeding the applicable specifications of the county in which such district roads are located." And so you need to find out what the Lee County specs are for a road such as this, and it's not a private road, it'll be a public road. So if you can-
Well, well, on Gateway, none of the, I don't think so anyways. None of the local roads are, are striped like that, to my knowledge.
Okay, so if you can just update it with that, with regards to what would be Lee County compliant.
This is in the county, not the city.
It's in the city, but the statute says county roads. Don't ask me why the statute says that.
So, city, city roads in the county.
Right, but the 190 says equal to or exceeding the applicable specifications of the county in which such district is located. Don't ask me why the legislature does what they do.
Well, I mean, either way, none of the roads in Gateway are striped like that, so anyways. So in conclusion, one of the crosswalks needs to have an ADA compliant ramp installed. One of the crosswalks, striping needs to be redone, preferably with thermoplastics. There's broken valley gutter that needs to be replaced, and we're estimating total repairs are about $16,000.
Okay.
And additionally, we have two other items, which are, you know, installing the missing crosswalk and to restripe the, the white stripe that's there. But in our opinion, that's not required, so.
But you're going to verify-
That's what we found.
Are there still monies in the construction bond fund for Palazzo? I can't recall. Normally, no. I'm not sure.
Seems like we've been-
I don't know if there were any for Palazzo. I don't know if there's any infrastructure there that we have, like water management, nor utilities, right? If it's in, is it an old Pelican?
Yeah, it's old, no, this is original.
It wouldn't be utilities. I don't know if there are any.
There is, Tony. I sent a bond file to you and Stephen today, because it had a plat and some survey information for Palazzo Villa Capri, including a list of the assets for the drainage system. So I just sent it to Stephen, said it might help your survey and other efforts.
So do you recall if there was money, funds still in there?
There was bond money in there that they expended and drew from, but the balance, or if that is available, I did not.
Okay. Well, if, if there is available money, then I would suggest the non-compliant ADA crosswalk, we use that to get it fixed. Well, what we might need to do is do another amended engineers' report to provide for that, as we've done in the past. Whatever, whatever the legal hurdles we have to do to go through it, but if we've got money to do it. But I spoke to the, yeah, Joe, you got some. Come up to the mic. Well, he's walking up there. I spoke to the community HOA president today, and to see if the community would be willing to take care of everything in here prior to turnover. And the answer to that is yes. They're willing to fund this. They have money for it. So I guess the question comes down to us without Joe talking yet, but if we would decide to accept it after this has been done, then at least we know we'd be compliant from an engineering point of view. Go ahead.
Judge Schofield, representing PIPAC and Palazzo, actually. I talked with Mike this morning also after I saw this report, and my concern, all this stuff was related to the developer, didn't do the work. And I asked Mike how this property was transferred over to them. And he was in a hospital having heart surgery, and David Caldwell basically just said, you guys got it, and here it is. There was no study, no walkthrough, no engineers were, were hired to do this. And I agree with Bob. If there's any funds around that could be dipped into to cover this, I think we should look at that. Otherwise, Mike did say they've, they're ready to go ahead and move forward with it. Now, he is concerned about the, the temper, the strips, whatever the, he'd rather paint them than use that thermal, thermal strip. He'd rather paint them than use that thermal strip. But he's prepared to listen to what we have to do, so whatever you folks decide, P-PAC will, at their coming meeting, look at this and hopefully just move forward and put this to bed.
So I think we've got...
Thank you.
It's basically two potential funding sources. One, I think we look into the... If there's any bond money left, and if not, if Palazzo is willing to absorb the cost, then...
Yeah, so if the board was... If there was available funding, that would not be available until after the District Number One amended engineers report and acquired the asset, because you can't use money, public funds, for primarily a private purpose, and right now would be a private purpose.
We have to accept it with the contingent that Palazzo is willing to...
Correct, and we still have a sketch and legal description of the survey. I think we talked about back of valley gutter, back of valley gutter that needs to be performed, so that excludes those drives and excludes the carports and all that.
Cool off. Correct. So whatever legal document we would need, Tony, to present to Palazzo to comply and to make the repairs, if they're not done another way, you know, if we try with the bond fund, we don't make it, but we're still going to accept it pending the condo associations ponying up to the bank and saying, "Yeah, we'll fund it if it's not." So that puts the district relatively harmless and free on it, because they want to get rid of it.
Oh, no, I understand that. And again, the district would have the ability to use public funds after the district acquired it, as opposed to beforehand. It would still need to survey.
Kind of gentleman's handshake, yeah. We're going to take it, and we're going to try and get it fixed, but if we don't, we fall short, Palazzo will backfill.
All we can do, I can draft a real simple acquisition agreement to do that.
You don't do anything simple.
I've got a simple one already lined up.
Thanks, Joe.
I can do that. I can bring a draft to the... Well, if not the next meeting, after maybe two meetings from now, a draft acquisition agreement. I have one we didn't pass to acquire some of the Western House properties, so...
Sounds good.
Do we need more paperwork then before P-PAC can move forward with this?
What paperwork do you...
Do we need a legal document, or...
I don't think so.
I mean, at the next P-PAC meeting, we'll review the engineering study, look at the $16,000, and say, "Okay, Palazzo is willing to do that, so go ahead, but we're going to... You're going to do a study to see if there's money available to maybe offset that."
I think, Tony, you're going to apply like a letter of intent.
Well, it'd be an acquisition agreement, because we recall also we have to have a title search performed. Once we get the survey, and the survey's going to cost... Stephen, do we have an estimate on the survey, or Chris?
Yeah, so just for the sketch and description, it's $3,050. That doesn't include a title search.
So, you know, we're talking probably another $4,000 in costs.
Okay, whatever that cost would be, we'll make a proposal that P-PAC bear that. I don't think we'll have an issue with that at all.
Did Palazzo pay that?
Palazzo pays for their portion, but if there's other things, if this other flyer comes out of the survey and stuff, I guess we'll ask P-PAC, I'm getting the nod, they can fund that.
That the district will pay for that? The district will pay that?
Yeah, through P-PAC, yes.
Okay, so we need to get the survey done, and then they can move forward?
Well, I would... I think we can do things in parallel, because the sentiment of the board is to acquire the roadway track. So I would suggest that the... Stephen, do you have a task authorization for that survey, or Chris? I can't recall.
I think it's included in there.
No, we don't. I mean, I have a... An estimate from a surveyor. I mean, if the HOA wants to pay for it, or P-PAC wants to pay for it, I can just forward you the information, and they can pay for it directly, or we can do a TA and sub it out. I mean, it's not going to be that much money difference. Whatever works best for everyone will help out.
Easiest roads, I guess, maybe.
Okay, yeah, in other words, if Tetra Tech can sub it out to another surveyor firm and get that underway, I do the acquisition agreement, so that way we're doing everything at the same time.
Very good.
That's it.
Okay, so we'll tell Palazzo to get that survey done, and they've agreed to pay for this stuff.
Yeah, I think the letter from Steve or Damsick said they would. I think it was Steve or Mark, I can't remember. One of the Damsicks.
Yeah.
I'm dealing with both Mark and Steve on multiple issues, so I...
And Joe, we certainly want to do that, but if we can say the residents want it by having...
I agree, I agree, but if we need to get the survey done immediately, if they agree to pay for it, and we say we'll pick it up, we can work that out. So at the next P-PAC meeting, then we could say we accept the engineering report, and with the survey, and Tony, you're going to get some documents for us, we can move forward at the next P-PAC meeting with this.
Okay, yep, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Stephen, anything else from you?
Nope, there's some other items that are going to come up, but I'll just stay on the line for now.
Okay, perfect. Okay, moving on to district manager report.
Sure, I just have a summary of our major construction projects underway. And nothing significant to report. The Pelican Boardwalk project had come in recently with a $52,000 change order from them pulling the lumber up and finding additional timbers and piles that needed to be replaced or might be replaced. $21,000 of that $52,000 is on an ad-needed basis, so... And hate to say it, but that's what happens when you do a remodeling job, is they start to pull things apart, and they find things underneath that weren't constructed according to the plans they were reviewing or deteriorating. So right now, we have about $5,600, I mean, $56,000 of a million-dollar contract and change orders, so still well under 10%. But the project's a little bit behind schedule due to weather and ability to get supplies, but it is moving along.
But it's unlikely to have other major areas like we had with this one deck.
So they say from there, and that's the main area, and then one they were really concerned...
A $56,000 oops is a big oops.
Yep.
Okay.
And typically, I would say, and I don't remiss on that, that we should have put a 10% or a 15% contingency right in the budget for that versus...
Everything from day one that Foster did has been less than 100%. This just being another item.
They did a good job on the bridges.
Yeah, but that's not this.
Yeah.
No, no, they... Yeah, Foster did, okay.
And Pelican Emergency Access Road is on schedule. We did get comments back from the city that we had a meeting about and talked, and basically what it resulted in is we're going to have to do a response and engage the city a little more. Olmonte sent us over a $3,000 additional funding to address that because it wasn't in their original scope. They just assumed the application would go in and be approved, but now that it's getting into a dialogue, going back and forth and responding to questions, so that $16,500 is now $19,500. And the only things we don't have hard costs on right now is we're getting bids this week on the entry gate at Prado and also on Gateway Boulevard from two contractors, and also from Bentley Electric for the electric drops. The gate people don't do high voltage, just the low voltage. So that and the landscaping, we should have something in this week, and then we'll have hard numbers. And once we issue the order for the gates, the landscaping, and Bentley Electric, all the service providers will be under contract and moving forward.
We don't expect major hiccups with this one in transient engineer in the city of Fort Myers?
No, I think it's just old comments, and they aren't germane, and we're going to respond to them and, you know, bring that forward and try to work out with them.
All right, thank you.
Did you get to clear the electrical issue to make sure that Lennar didn't shut it off with FPL?
Yeah, they're going to keep that active for six months. We can use that drop. It may be worthwhile for going to the gate from Gateway, but the one going down to Prado, it's probably just going to be easier to put a new service in off one of the transformers on the end of Prado Drive.
Is there a transformer that we can give 110?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So...
What is it, about, I think it's 800 feet, 900 feet?
And it's...
A direct burial wire?
Yep, it would be cheaper to do the drop over at the gate than it would be to run the wire and come to it.
Even if we have to pay dual meter costs?
Yeah, we're getting pricing on it, though, so we should have that Monday or Tuesday. We'll be coming back the next meeting with the utility rate case documents, and that'll be a presentation to the board, ask for their approval to move forward and set a public hearing date. Again, the reason for this utility rate case is we were under earning on the waters... On the water side of the equation, and we were also bringing up the irrigation rates due to consumption, and also to send a pricing signal to our customers on trying to get them to reduce the amount of water that we're using. We also took a close look at the equivalency for the master meter communities compared to the homes that are in there to make sure that was equitable. So you'll be hearing the full presentation from the consultants, and we'll plan to ask the board for approval, set a public hearing date and move forward. And besides the rates, we'll also be doing some changes to the rules, updating them with the policies, where we're responsible for sewer cleanouts, the 1.5% transfer of funds from the enterprise fund to the general fund, formalizing that, and just some minor customer service issues that we want to formalize. And Kenny May, we are working on the irrigation permit for the Club at Gateway, that golf course, Tony.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, and we had a nice call. I think the date would be... Hopefully, we're shooting for the October 7th board meeting. I think we missed the 16th. But on that, we had a nice go-to meeting conference with Tom Garlick and Don Garrett, and I think Jim Lyons, and I don't know if anybody else was there, Jim Lynn, excuse me. Anybody else was there?
Jimmy Lynn.
Jimmy Lynn. Had a good conversation. They... I think they better understand what we were looking for. They were going to... I think there's going to be some suggested reversions that they were going to make to the draft agreement, and I don't have those back yet, so I'll just send an email to Tom. I mean, that's my recollection, Chris, that they were going to try to make some modifications or...
They had some minor language changes that they wanted to make, and it wasn't any problem.
I'll just send a reminder email to Tom Garlick to ask him to do that. Tom's the attorney for the club. But I think they understood now the rationale for it and the approach. At first, I think it was a foreign language to them. And that was a very productive meeting, actually.
And related to that, we got our summer force main project that's on schedule. We got the signed easement documents from the developer, and notice proceed will be issued for the contractor to get started in a couple weeks. And that'll take a huge amount of that work away from the roundabout at Griffin Drive Construction. It'll get our construction out of those construction limits, and we will have new pipe and new valves at that intersection and a greater amount of control over the whole system. It's very positive all the way around. County's moving forward with getting comments on the plans for the Griffin Drive, and they plan to get started on that in April of 2022. And I'll just mention quickly Arborwood Phase 3, we're going back and forth with them to protect the cleanouts. They had the station filling with sand.
Same thing again.
Lines, and they've been vacuuming it out because we wouldn't install any water meters. So that seems to get them, but they are being very cooperative, and they're trying, and I'll have to say that the construction supervisors out there don't have a lot of control over the subs when they dump construction materials and dumpsters and knock things off at ground level and hide them, and it doesn't fix, and it fills the system with sand. So... But otherwise, it's just things coming up on our bond validation process for both the enterprise fund, and we have some development return bonds, a couple of them on the agenda today, and the other ones will be coming up on future agendas.
I had one question, and you're dealing with FPL. Have you had difficulty in getting any meters installed? And the reason that I'm asking is if there's undue delays, because we have a pond number one in Colonial Boulevard where we put in the Colonial Country Club, where we put in the aeration nine months ago. We don't have a meter yet.
How are they billing you?
Despite both of them, I'm sorry.
Estimated billing?
No, they don't have...
How are they billing you?
No, they haven't even put a meter in. We can't operate here.
Well, you're going to have heavy power.
We can't get a meter, and that's why I'm asking. We've had difficulties with that, because everything's been sitting there now for nine months and not functioning.
Well, six months is like the average time now. It's very difficult to get electric service.
So we're having the same difficulty, just not ignoring Pelican, it's everybody. Okay.
Sounds good for the aeration.
And that's all I have unless there are any questions.
Okay, Public Works update.
Good afternoon, Brian Beshear, Public Works Manager. This is a little bit of August. We had a tree fall down here in front of the building. We had to get mainscape to kind of cut it up. It was kind of blocking almost toward the edge of the road. Got a few slides here, Chris can kind of go through. We did some pepper tree removals along Gateway Boulevard. We got some other areas identified to kind of take these invasive trees out. I know Flavia's kind of big on those, so we're getting rid of the pepper trees as much as we can. Storm drains, oak trees, folks. After the third time of cleaning this, Elle and I was kind of like, enough's enough. This catch basin had over a foot where the leaves on it after that seven-inch rainstorm in August. That was about the third time. If you go to the next slide, you'll see what we kind of did to stop it. I got with one of our vendors, and we put riprap around it, so we'll stop at one where another for getting down in that. That pipe actually drains into the pond thereby between the Alta and the Gateway Charter High School. We've done about three or four other ones in the last couple of weeks up and down Gateway Boulevard to try to prevent the leaves from the oak trees from going down in the storm drains. That's pretty much what we're doing up and down Gateway Boulevard. The vaccon truck is continuing to do its thing. Right now, it's down here behind the subway by the saffron and all that, kind of cleaning the rest of Basin 5. We're about halfway through that.
And this fix has been robust? It works?
It does. You got to put large enough rock, though, don't do small. You got to do the bigger... This is like a six-to-12 stone. We did put some four-to-six, actually not four-to-six, six-to-12. Riprap's a little bit bigger, but areas that you don't have traffic, and you just got, like, major oak trees, it works the best to keep it out of there. The water will get through it, but when you're constantly, every time you get a storm, spend half a day to two days to clean the leaves out, we're like, this stops it. That's kind of the August update. I think Jim's next.
Question.
Go ahead.
Tuesday morning, Brian was very upset with a letter that just appalled me, an email that you sent out. Where do you get the idea that you tell supervisors what they'll do and not do? Where do you get that idea?
Well, sir, when I get a phone call at 6:30 at night from the vice president of a company, a certain board member's called them repeatedly, nonstop. I heard more than that. I also have been told, I guess you told me you were chairman of the board? I don't know if that's true or not.
No, I did not.
But the gentleman called me and said, "Would you please stop?" Because I was instructed by the board not to interfere with that report whatsoever.
That's correct. Didn't say anything about board members.
My staff did not, and I thought it was fair to the rest of the board members.
You don't have that authority.
Well, that's up to the...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion authorizing the district manager to terminate the position of the director of public works effective two weeks from today.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that this is not agenda item, that if any members of Public Works want a comment on this item...
So we have a motion and a second. Before we go into discussion, we'll open it up to the public.
Absolutely, 100%.
If you just... If you want to have a comment, you need to come up to the...
Oh, sorry. You mean terminating Mr. Brian Beshear?
Correct.
Yes, I would agree with that 100%. I'm Justin Christell, 12503 Kentwood Avenue. I believe he's unfit for his position. I believe the decisions he's made in regards to the community, as far as the community being Gateway, is... Yeah, I mean, it's unacceptable. I mean, there's just a lot of things that have happened in the past. Yeah, I mean, I would back that 100%, so, yeah. So I would hope the board take that into consideration, that, you know, as far as termination goes. That's all I got to say.
Any additional comments? Yes, sir, if you'll go to the podium.
Jim Wazniewski, Silver Lakes. I was actually going to make a comment like this during the pond workshop, but the whole process of this report that came out really has been pretty well tainted, because it was tainted by Brian and others on the staff for five weeks prior to the date that you appointed the person. So while Flavia said, "Yes, do not have any contact after this date," that's fine, but for five weeks prior, and I wrote to all you about this. I had the emails to prove it, when all these meetings took place between the guy who wrote this report and staff and Brian, and it was tainted from the start.
I believe they were, the consultant was given marching orders to come to a conclusion and then orders to try to backfill it. And as you'll hear from me later on, he didn't backfill it, he didn't do anything frankly. But yeah, I'd, I'd support that.
Joe Schofield, just representing myself. I'm not aware of what's taking place. All I want to say is Brian's been very helpful to me and I appreciate it.
Any, any board comments?
There's, there are two comments that came from the public, Matt and Abu, and they both said they agree with the motion and made some specific comments. So I'll just say they, they both chimed in and said yes.
Who is this?
From Gateway Greens, Abu Shanin.
Abu Shanin, okay.
Did you have a comment?
I have a question. So I guess it'll be for Tony. So in regards to the email that Brian sent out, I don't want to give you a bad guy. In the email that Brian sent out, is that something that it's common, appropriate or not appropriate?
Measuring by common conduct from a staff member to direct the board members not to have contact with the vendor?
Yes.
Typically, those kind of requests would come from the manager who's the, I'll call it the direct report to a collegial body such as a city council with a city manager, county commissioner, county managerial, ask the board member, ask board members not to contact vendors, or there might be ordinances, policies, rules, regulations, not saying that can occur. The question is whether or not, and this is a question, I think that's what the motion in essence says, but it's up to Chris's manager to make that determination, whether the action is appropriate or insubordinate, or whether it falls within any of the grounds for termination under the employee manual. Because the manual provides that the district manager is the one that determines whether a team member should be terminated.
And I guess my question goes in because I remember when I was sitting on the other side and I remember when Margaret was the chair and then we had an issue similar to this in regards to calling vendors and then I remember it came from you and you, and I'm trying to pull your brain out. And at the time it was, it was, and I was going to say, I don't remember exactly what it was, but we had something similar into that, that the instruction was for the board members not to reach out to certain vendors, or something to that nature. So that's why I'm asking if this is different or if it's.
Well, there's a number of different contexts. One was rules with regards to that once the board makes a determination to solicit proposals, that no vendor can contact a board member. And that's like a, they call it like a bubble to try to prevent any undue lobbying of a board member when their board is going through a solicitation process. So that a vendor who's going to submit a proposal doesn't try to create favor with the board member in advance. And so that's, that's in the solicitation process. The other context where this issue can arise are when you have board members directing vendors to take certain actions. And then that causes problems because there's a contract and the contractor is going to say, listen, I have these contract terms I need to comply with and the board can only act through the board. And or the manager who's monitoring and administering the contract on behalf of the board will tell the vendor, you are in compliance, you're not in compliance, do this or don't do that with the contract. Because arguably then you could have the vendor saying that they're being interfered with and performing their contract and try to assert some claim against the district. So in this context, it was, the work was already performed and so it's a little bit different. Again, every place is a little bit different.
And that's the point of clarity. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, same here.
Your inquiry was post completion of the report.
Yeah, and the, the issue is, I want to make, make it perfectly clear for everybody, including Brian. This was the straw that broke the camel's back. This wasn't the first time we, as a board, have talked about this. We've talked about stuff being done and funds being transferred and not coming before this board. We talked about procurement and not going out and getting multiple bids on stuff. This, this was not the only sole thing that resulted in this, but this took the cake. I, as a board member, cannot do my due diligence and read a report, come to a meeting and be expected to have a dialogue with a guy who I don't know anything about. I don't know his background. I don't know anything about his firm. And then when he makes statements like he made, and we'll talk about this later on, that are in the report, they're flat false, flat false. That did it. I wanted to find out. I called him three times. I never got to talk to him. I left a message to call. On the third time, I sent him an email that explained exactly what I was, said I was a supervisor. You're flat lying or he's lying if you said, I said I was the chairman. I, you want to sit there and go to my phone, you go, but you're going to be talking to the secretary. Now, Brian, I just don't put up with that kind of stuff at all. Haven't for 40 years and I sure as hell ain't starting it right now. So that's the explanation.
I got a couple of comments. When I read the letter, it struck me as totally inappropriate also. And I talked to our current district manager, Mr. Schumacher. And in the course of that conversation, we talked about things like, well, you know, he's leaving, he's short timer. Would it be appropriate him to take action immediately? And that's a whole other arena, but that's one of the reasons why I seconded the motion because it's, he's looking outward, not inward. But I did find that there was some other problems in January of this year in which he was formally warned, reprimanded, whatever the right term were for some things that happened. But like Ed, I have some problems with some past decisions that were made with spending money and large amounts of money that didn't come before the board. I have had and continue to have questions about the open bidding processes and I personally have heard back from some vendors that they won't submit bids for our work because of the difficulty of working specifically with Brian. The issue we had a couple of weeks ago with Mettauer where he explained to us that, yeah, everybody totally understood it was whatever the dollar amount was going to cover all of them, whereas if nothing could have been further from the truth with what Mettauer was told. And they came in here and a 180 happened. I don't know, I mean, just overall, it leads me to conclude that it's probably time to get a new public works manager. So that's my.
And Bill, I just want to give you an opportunity if you had any comments to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have heard mostly secondhand about errors of omission or commission that Brian has made over the last few years. And I think some of them were just outrageous. And I'm inclined to feel the same way that Bob just described. Time to get a new.
Chris, as the district manager and being the, his supervisor, what's your, do you support the?
It puts me in a tough spot because everyone in the board was talking about my contract and they said anybody I wanted to terminate, they were going to take that responsibility that they had, that I had to have board approval.
Yeah, but that, that contract's not in place, so you're still operating under, under standard conditions, so.
I'm confused.
No, the existing, the, the contract that was signed, that Chris then submitted his resignation the same day is in force and effect.
Yeah, well, what a.
And so the, I think the action is that the board recommend, but, because only the manager can terminate the employees.
And that was the reason I made the motion the way I did.
Yeah.
So anyway, just, you know, it would be nice to hear input from, from you and, and if our assistant district manager wants to chime in as well. This is a, I mean, this is a, you know, a very.
Awkward, touchy.
Yeah, well.
Yes, yes, me, in the big picture, there's some real good things and there's some other things that are very disconcerting besides just the work. And, you know, I had them bring in a change order for $100,000. It was a little more than that on a project and I said, when are they going to do this work? He goes, well, they already did it. I was like, didn't go to the board, wasn't in the budget. That seemed, surprised me. And I just find him to be a negative and disruptive influence on the entire organization.
So as, as it sits now, you would support the, the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, I would.
Laura, would you add anything?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tony from here, is there anything?
I would suggest that Laura and Chris, you know, take the appropriate actions under the employee manual to do what they need to do to provide for the termination. I think that's, once again, the, the manual says that it's up to the discretion of the manager of the boards expressed its, its position.
Okay.
Jim Kennedy, Landscape Services. I don't know how to follow this up and I don't know if I want to, I want to that.
These types of decisions are never easy and they're, they're not personal or.
Yes, sir.
These things happen.
Florida statute doesn't allow anything else.
So let's try to move on the best we can.
Yes, do it. The, so, you know, I tried to do a little bit different with the summary of the work that's been done, operation summary with the help of L as well as Mrs. Walsh has been a great help with trying to put something better together as far as the, the summary of it. So you can go down there and look, it's pretty, pretty mundane. There's some highlights I kind of would like to go over. One area was the Commerce Lakes and Daniels area that we discussed last time I was here. I actually reached out to the county port authority and Ed Moran, met with them out there and we have that cleaned up now. So that's not a, something that we have to do. That was about a $3,500, I think, cleanup and then it was going to be maintained, they will maintain it. And from what I hear going forward, the, there's a, something going in there from the, from the bar, from Gateway. But anyway, I think the fields, the soccer fields or the athletic fields are doing great. We've done a lot of work in there. They're starting to ramp up as far as activity there. Unfortunately, I've been in close contact with Mark as far as getting the goals and things set up and I think tonight was going to be as kind of the big, they were just having all the fields taken and of course we got so much rain, we had to close the field. So unfortunately that, that couldn't happen, but.
What were they going to do tonight?
They had the big practice.
Oh, they were start practice tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and, and they had all the fields, one through five reserved. So we had all the goals taken out. We also got some new goals that we were replacing, ones that were, had, you know, basically fell apart, I think they'd been here for a while. As well as the summary for each week also included the, as we, as I get areas that need to be addressed, Mainscapes has a customer service report that I do instead of calling and, you know, you know, he may hit six calls in the next 30 minutes and, you know, remember three of them. This way I get a report, I get a report that it's been issued, I get a report that it's been done and then I'll go out there and check it and then move it out. So there was, and this is just a summary of it. You have the whole report on, on your paperwork, I believe. So there, we had 21 inquiries in August, 15 were initiated by the Gateway personnel, six were initiated by Mainscapes. And then it gives you a breakdown of what's, what's been open and closed and the overdue ones, as well as, I think the next, the next meeting, the next report that I have, I will also include, I'll break down Stony Brook as well. So the, the, the customer service reports on Stony Brook as well as the one through Gateway. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to ask them, I mean, answer them and.
No. No.
The only thing that you brought up is, is that are we going to amend review first and research and then amend the contract with them to discuss this FPL issue?
So, so there are multiple, multiple issues. I know Jim found one in regards to the mulch that was, I was not even aware of it. And that was, I think we found out yesterday when we met with the school, we had pulled out, we have pulled out the, the mulch, not, not for 2022, 2021, out of the contract. However, when you read the contract, it says mulch is included. So there are, and, and I actually, I missed that one because I read the contract and I probably have seven items that I, I would like to suggest.
Multi-equated 2021 contract.
No, 2021, yes, 2021. So we're not paying, but however, we forgot to remove the language out of the contract. So that's something that, you know, it needs, there are multiple.
What's the term of the contract?
Twenty twenty-three.
Three year?
Yes, sir.
How much do we have to go?
Two more years.
Let's just get an amendment.
Well, two, two and a half.
Let's just do it by an amendment.
Oh, we need to.
Just get an amendment.
Right. And there's, there's several others too. And after, as I review, and we'll probably have that ready within the November or October, late October.
Does Mainscape have issues also? Counter issues?
No, I don't believe so.
And I think the conversation Laura and L were at the same meeting. I think Laura, am I right? We are, we are, Jim is going to look at the contract and get his feedback and what we think needs to be changed and then it will come to the board. Or you want just me and Jim to give the board a draft of what we think to Tony? Tony reviews it and then comes to the board?
I thought, my understanding was that Jim was going to do it and bring it to the board.
Okay, so.
Before we take anything to Tony. We wanted to have everything all together first and then give it to Tony.
Okay, so I just want to know the order. So Jim brings it to the board and then we review it and goes to Tony and then goes to Mainscape, or yeah?
We had money set aside in this year's budget, as I recall, that got into some of the landscape issues relative to the controllers, control system. I have yet to see a report from Mainscape that identifies what the zones are, what the control mechanisms, that whole thing, because we're talking about money, a lot of money, probably million, two million bucks.
Yeah.
When are we going to see something so that we can make some decisions on how we're going to do that work?
I think.
In other words, have we gotten a report of the new control system, proposed new control system from Mainscape?
I've got a proposal from them for almost a million dollars for this.
Is it community wide or just a certain area?
No, Gateway.
Gateway totally wide?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd, I'd certainly like to see that because that's something that we have talked about getting going. We, we can't continue just to throw water out in the street.
Well, now we got 45 battery operated timers. You can't even adjust them.
I know.
Unless you go out there to each one of them.
But we have them, as I understand it, because we have failures in the control system.
Because they antiquated system.
So we need to get it.
Absolutely.
Updated.
100%.
But, but we don't have a million.
We put it in the, we put it in the capital plan for 2022.
Correct, but was it a million?
A million, yep.
Okay.
Almost a million.
Brian did get that before, while, during the budgeting process.
I'd like to see that so that we have an idea of what that system is. Did, who worked, you worked with, Zane?
Juan.
Juan?
Yeah, with Mainscapes.
Juan?
Two.
Their, their irrigation man, their expert is, is Zane, Zane Stoneman.
Oh, yeah, Zane was out here.
Okay.
Yeah, Zane was out here, yeah.
Okay. I was going to say, Juan, this is, this is over his pay grade.
Right.
Juan's a good guy, but he is not a controller designer.
Zane, Zane was kind of leading the march, but.
Good. Zane's the guy that needs to be doing it.
You know, across the table from me is Juan. So that's who, and he was, he got with Zane.
If Zane authored.
The report is from Zane.
Okay, if Zane authored the report, I feel a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Is this report relatively new, this status report?
August.
Oh, it is, it is new because it's excellent.
Oh, thanks.
And I would.
Thank you.
Well, I would think that Pelican Joe's here and he's going to be the chairperson of the landscaping committee over there, Joe Schofield. And I don't know if you've seen this thing or not. I'll make sure you get a copy of it, but it's a, it's a great tool that Pelican could employ. Secondly, are, and I'll say this out of ignorance, but are all of the Gateway District landscapers aware that there, or is there a prohibition about putting gerris clippings, belling them or mowing them into the ponds? Is that a consideration that?
That's a longstanding.
We fought that battle for so long.
We don't use open deck mowers. They're all closed decks.
I think what he's referring to is all of our associations that do.
Yes.
And they blow like, oh, the golf course, everybody.
Well, I got a call this week for the golf courses, very thing.
Gateway Greens, I have talked to them, and talked to the club boys, when you're mowing it, don't blow it lake-wise. Don't throw it in the lake.
Is it in the contract? Do we have it in the contract?
I don't know.
We may, you know, because then there ought to be a penalty if they do. If you catch them.
If you catch them.
Then we'll go and harvest it, and there will be an incentive for them not to do that.
I'm not so sure that you've got some county issues that would come to play that you wouldn't even have to have at the contract, that they'd be violating it to begin with.
Well, unfortunately, they have the same problem that all of the minimum wage people do. The turnover of personnel is so frequent, it's very difficult to maintain those disciplines.
Absolutely.
But okay, enough said. Thank you.
So there's kind of two things for you, Jim. One, I applaud the step in the right direction as far as this checklist moving forward. And even on top of that, I really appreciate you reaching out and getting other people's input and driving forward. Because for me, oversight's always been something that I think we have control over, but we may not have executed at the level that we should be doing in the past. And I'm not talking about necessarily you specifically, but just historically, we bring vendors in.
I agree with you.
We go through a rigorous process of identifying them. We put a contract together, and then we don't, we don't monitor and maintain oversight to make sure things are getting done. So what I would say is, I would use this opportunity with Mainscape. If we're going to do an amendment, we use it as an opportunity to look and have open discussion on enforcement. If we need to make some changes, let's try to do it all-inclusive. So, you know, reach out to staff, get additional input, you know. The board was, I know Flavi and others would reach out to you directly, but let's, let's do this right this time, so we don't have to do it again. And hold, hold Mainscape accountable where they need to be accountable.
I agree.
Yeah, but, okay.
And we're also doing it with the, with the tree contract, too.
And I, and I was going to say, I was going to say that for my supervisor comments, but I might as well say it now because I wanted to here. We had the meeting with personal touch with Mainscape, and really the meeting with personal touch, Jim kind of spearheaded that, and I sent him an email. I think it was a great meeting. I was expecting to get better, but boy, I was not expecting to get 100% better the next day, and it was. It was literally.
With personal touch, you mean?
It was night and day, and it was a beginning, in the beginning, I think it was a little bit defensive, and we explained that this is, it's new, but it's going to go across the board with all vendors. We just maybe not necessarily be able to do it with every single one. But Rob has done a great job, I think, you know, and this morning.
Turning it around.
Yeah, it turned it around, you know, I'm confident.
I think the word opportunity goes a long way.
Yeah, I think if we, if we continue to work on the partnership and hold them accountable, I think it's only going to make everything better.
Another issue. Are you familiar with this? The tree report?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, that's going to be reported on the next meeting. We've got the.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, a whole meeting for that, Ed.
They're coming in.
This was an eye-opener, and it's going to be an eye-opener when it hits the streets in the community.
You can't.
So, yeah, maybe two meetings with flak jackets and everything else. Because this.
For each tree.
Sometimes they say, watch what you ask for. Well, this is it. This is it.
And so in regards to that, and I think I spoke with you a little bit, I think this is something that we, they ask for transparency, and now that we don't give it to them, this is something that I would like Laura to post it on.
This should be on the website before our meeting so that the public will have a chance.
And I almost think that this is going to require almost a town hall.
And that's what I was going to say.
As opposed to just a meeting forum, because a lot of things get lost in translation, and we're limited on time. This needs to, there's a much larger story that needs to be told.
Yes, there is, and I totally agree with that. I would have the initial meeting, let the initial meeting sell the town hall attendance.
And I agree.
Because the word will get out and the people will come out. What they don't understand in listening to this guy, he used some terms that I'd never even heard of before of describing how you cut a tree and what it looks like.
Right.
Yeah.
But I would say that we violated damn near every one of them.
Pretty much.
At some point.
So I don't want to get too deep into this, but I think to Ed's point is, we need to be prepared, you know, moving forward. And I think maybe, Laura, you and Chris might even talk about, is it most appropriate to bring this? There's probably, we need to be planning for step two, which is we're going to lay this out, and then we're probably going to have to have a much larger discussion at town hall, because this goes into maybe just overall, you know, community maintenance and.
It's too big.
Yeah.
I completely agree.
Yeah.
So the only thing is, in regards to, we may want to let the Arborists know, because I believe we, we thought about we're going to have him for three hours, right, total? So we may let him know that it will be two meetings, and as long as we keep the same rate for the scope of work that we sign up for.
Yeah, I don't want him, I don't want to have a three-hour discussion next board meeting.
Oh, it's a minute, well, you pay, if you have him twice, if he's here for 45 minutes, you're going to pay for the three hours.
That doesn't bother me. As critical as this issue is, if it's three three-hour meetings, we've got to take and make sure that, you talk about transparency.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we.
This is one that's going to require transparency.
Yeah, I agree. I want to make sure.
This is what we got now.
We don't rush.
But there's nothing that says we have to go three hours, but have the discussion such that it lays the groundwork for the public meeting.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that. Thank you, Jim.
Okay. I would be remiss without saying Laura did help me with this report immensely.
Okay.
It was pretty jumbled up.
I will say, he did it, and I just gave feedback. The majority of the work was done by Jim.
It takes a village.
There you go. Thank you very much.
That's how we should be operating anyway. It's collaboration. Okay. Moving on, Mr. Hall.
He took care of one of the trees with his, yeah, one of his, he's got about 50 pages in here, took care of one tree.
And if the board wants to wait until the first of the next month to give this status report, considering the workshop today and the time, we can move that.
Yeah, I'd initially just planned to just go ahead.
There was a couple of things that you needed approval on.
Oh, for the agenda item. I have an agenda item. But say, I, with this meeting, I was just going to go ahead and just push it to the next meeting.
Just hit highlights, you know, whatever you think is.
Well, here's a real good highlight with this, what I was going with this one is the Arizo Master Station took a direct lightning hit, and we got a call at about 7:15 that our lift station was on fire. What it actually was.
Which one was it?
Arizo, master station in Pelican Preserve. And we got a call, it hit at the FPL connection. So the power surged, and it looks like, we had Superior come in and look at the generator, because that has a fixed generator at, at that location, and it will not run. And we had our Superior, who does, services our generators here and the fixed one, and they, mechanically, it's sound, but it's a software issue. It looks like the lightning arrestor for the panel worked, but it went into the generator, and it looks like it completely burnt out the software that runs that generator. So basically, it's just sitting there, and it will not run. So we had the station offline for three days. FPL came out, redid everything, and we got back online.
What's the repair time for the generator?
We don't know. We've got Cummins coming out, I believe, Tuesday of next week. They're the, they're the provider for the software, and they're going to have to do a full-scale workup on that, on that. So as it is right now, that generator is non-operational. Mechanically, it's sound from what we, what Superior could tell with our, with Bill out there, but it's a software issue.
Does it have a bypass for a Thompson?
Yes, and we ran it on a generator, but yes, we've got, we've got two safety factors.
Is it, can you refurbish that, or is it, once it's fried, it's fried?
We have, we have to have Cummins come out here and go over it and give us, give us what we need to do.
And just out of curiosity, when that type of failure happens, how were we alerted?
By South Trail telling us our lift station was on fire.
Okay, so there was no, we didn't get any type of.
I thought, I thought. We should have an audiovisual alarm. I thought it would have went off.
It went offline. That's all we got. But we got a call from South Trail that your, your lift station's on fire.
So that's something just to maybe think about, because I thought with our system that we had different alerts.
We'll get, we'll get a power failure. This is what, what it comes up as, if you have any power.
It comes up as a power.
Yeah, it comes up as a power.
If it's really bad, it comes up as a power failure.
It's a really bad power failure to have.
But we, did we get alerted or we did not?
No, well, it came through the SCADA, but there again.
That's what I was thinking, the SCADA.
South Trail was on scene and just called us directly from the line, the number that was there.
I guess my point is, I just want to make sure that our.
Backup.
Our redundant systems and our.
Yes.
Kind of notification.
Yes.
That we've got.
And it works.
And nothing's a good test like.
A lightning strike. A direct lightning, yeah.
So just, I'm sure you're aware, and you're going to make sure we've got all, everything in place, but I thought we would have maybe been notified maybe sooner than.
Do we have an insurance coverage on this?
Yes, as far as I know. We've, I've prepared Laura to get ready.
With lightning.
To get ready for an insurance, insurance claim.
Yep.
We're good.
Yep.
But say, that was the highlight of that. The rest of it.
And that is, that's Azuro, correct?
I'm sorry?
That community is Azuro?
Oh, no, that's in Prado. It's on Arizo Drive.
Oh, do we have an Arizo Drive? I didn't even know we had an Arizo Drive.
Yes, it's Arizo and Prado, Prado Drive, right on the corner. And the rest of it, I can just, I'll push off to the next, to the next utility meeting.
Thanks, Kenny.
All right, great. Thanks, Kenny. Okay, we will go, move on to action items. Did you want to just stay up?
Kenny Hall, utility director. We do this every year in the last meeting of September for the Thompson bypass pumps. This is for two Thompson bypass pumps, one pull behind, one fixed. We get, we get about an $8,000 discount when we do it before the beginning of October first, so we like to bring it in as soon as we can. These, this will be the fourth of the pull behind. As we, we really debated about getting this bypass pump, and as our generators age out, this bypass pump, we're specifically going to use for Pelican or Arborwood because they are separated from the regular Gateway community. And what we learned, and luckily, when Irma hit, Prado, I think, had 25 homes, and the story, I had none. So we had three lift stations with basically no flow. So we were cut off from that community for three days. And in the event of a hurricane or a, it would be a hurricane, and we get cut off from these communities, we can set this pump there and hook it up and put it into bypass before it hits, and then run the station, so we do not have to go with the move equipment through flooded roads and down trees, which was the big thing in Pelican from our end, was down trees. We could get into the community, but we had to walk around and get picked up on the other side. So this, this will alleviate that. We're planning on putting it at the, or at the Arborwood III station, and it'll be pretty much there full-time. We run these pumps about once a week, so we'll move it out, hook it up, run it. The fixed one will be our fourth fixed bypass pump, and it is going to be at Lift Station 7, which is right up here. We call it the 711 Station. This will also include fencing, driveway, and it's kind of in conjunction with the 16th Forest Main project that's coming along. We don't anticipate this one coming online right away or being, being installed until after January. We usually take delivery, say, and I also put in there, I don't know if it was in there, the service area for Lift Station 7. The service area is pretty big. It's probably the biggest one we have as far as what flows into this station. And our biggest concern is KOP lawn. KOP lawn is going to be coming directly into this station, so it's going to go from a low-flow station to a high-flow station pretty fast. We had, in 2019, we rehabbed the wells, the vault. We changed everything over to HTP. And this is also, what I really wanted to point out is pump around. With the two new, two new bypass pumps we put in, we have full pump around capability. And what that means is, is that, and I'm going to cite, in 2018, City of Cape Coral was hit with a tornado, hit Master Station 300, and it completely wiped it out. I mean, there was nothing left. They had no means to control this station. So they have pump around capabilities, which we are going to be doing for our bypass pumps. And what that basically means is that we can pull from the sanitary sewer and directly completely bypass the station and dump it right into the force main. So in the event of something really catastrophic, like a well collapse, or, I can think of all kinds of scary scenarios. We lose the lift station panel, the line gets broken.
Valve pit.
Valve pit. That, what this will allow us to do is to completely bypass the lift station altogether.
Kenny, on this, losing your terminology here, this bypass pump, this pump, we'll have five, correct?
Yes, five fixed.
I'm sorry?
Five fixed bypass pumps, four mobile, well, three mobile if we bypass.
So the ones we're getting here, one of them will be the one that's at the Griffin. That will be a fix.
That'll be a fixed bypass pump.
And then the other one that's being purchased with the $180,000 will be the.
Toe behind.
I'm sorry?
Toe behind.
Okay.
Portable. We can move around. Right, okay.
And just to play devil's advocate, because I know we have, we've invested a lot in our infrastructure and our ability to be able to address situations when they come. Is this, are we planning for 50-year, 100-year event, or is this something that?
This, hurricane. Hurricane, massive power outage. Should we have a power outage?
Being prepared and having all this stuff, I just want to make sure that we're, we don't have equipment that's just going to be sitting in, you know, in the lot for the next five, seven years.
There's a lot of people that would be happy with that, because that means that we didn't have any natural disaster.
And again, I'm not saying I disagree with it. I'm just, I'm sure there's someone out there that says, why do we need all this equipment when we're planning for something that may happen every 20 years?
Also, I want to add that the four generators that we've had for, I think, going on 11 years now are starting to age out. And as they age out, we would like to go to more bypass. Because, and again, with the mobile bypass pumps or any bypass pump, but specifically the mobile bypass pump, it has a multi-use, too. It saved us in Casella when Casella went down, and we could not, it got clogged. We can hook it up, run it backwards, and it clears the line. It happened with Arborwood. Also, a sanitary sewer break in, or sanitary sewer clog or break, and we actually have to shut the sewer down, we can run a bypass from manhole to manhole with these pumps. I mean, they have really good uses. And we run these, try to run these every week.
And just out of curiosity, with, with, one of the pull behinds or one of the mobile pump stations, what's their, what's their shelf life? How many years can you get out of it?
According to Thompson, 15 years.
15 years.
And they have, and they have a rebuild of five, every five years for just general maintenance. Yeah. And we've incorporated that into our maintenance program, so Superior's starting to do the general maintenance on them.
Motion to approve the $180,000 expenditure of the two Thompson pumps.
I second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I may, just quickly, Kenny, before you go, could you just touch for a minute or two on your emergency cooperative drills you're planning with Lee County Utilities?
Well, as a part of the report, we had our yearly, we sit down with all the Lee County managers, our counterparts. And one of the things that I was working with my counterpart on the Lee County side was a hurricane preparation. And what we would do is shut all the stations down, get all of our equipment out there, and start using it. And in a mock hurricane, we lose every station. And now we're going to run through the, run through the drill, get our people in that really good experience. We only have two people on staff that were here for Irma. And what we, what I was proposing was that we asked Lee County if they would want to do an employee swap, where we would take our employees, they would take some of our employees over there for emergency breaks, valve replacements, real-time stuff that our employees could learn on. And in return, we would bring them over for a mock hurricane, and they could take some of our equipment out, and their guys could start working on an emergency plan. And we're on the very, very preliminary stages of that, and Lee County's been very agreeable to it.
That's fantastic.
And.
Have you heard anything from Worthington yet on?
Yes.
Any plans or anything of what they're, because we put the ball in their park to come back with us of how they're going to handle all of those utilities. Have we gotten something?
Yes. Lee County, at part of that meeting, Lee County agreed to let them hook into their sewer force main out onto the FPL Eastman. So the sewer, sewer issue is settled.
That was an easy fix for them.
Right, and I'm surprised they did it, but they did. They made it, they also offered a third meter in front of Worthington for another connection for Worthington, so they could loop there and then loop in the backside and create their loop. We're organizing a meeting now to.
Loop for water?
For water. Irrigation question has not been settled yet.
Go up the FPL Eastman.
That, to me, is the only realistic way they're going to be able to do that. We're organizing a meeting with myself and Chris and Steven and their engineer, who is from Banks Engineering, to come in and sit down and go over the whole entire program.
Where is the pump station that feeds the wastewater treatment plant that sends the force main up the FPL Eastman that feeds the plant? Where's that pump station?
Oh, there's multiples. That's out on the airport. That's the whole airport line.
Is it a single pump station feeding that pipe?
Oh, there's multiple, multiples.
What size is that force main where they're dumping in?
16, as far as I know.
So they're going to probably pump a four-inch into a 16-inch?
Most likely.
Okay.
And to be honest, I didn't think Lee County would even go for it, but they actually were very agreeable to it. They just wanted to make it clear that they were not going.
Why wouldn't you add another one?
They, they just wanted to make it clear to us that they were not interested in incorporating Worthington into their, it was, it was.
No, 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 no.
It's in the districts, and we're, the irrigation is going to be the sticking point. That's.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. Appreciate it. Moving on, Pelican Preserve Access Control and Privacy Services contracts.
Good afternoon. L Harris, Gateway Services District. I did the bid package and helped with the process on this, but I am going to defer the recommendations to Mr. Meese to represent Pelican Preserve.
Great.
Phil Meese, Pelican Preserve and P-PAC, we decided that it was time for us to bid out this contract. We got only two bids, one our incumbent company, which is Securitas, the other is Wiser. And we did not eventually get a bid from Allied Universal. So we have the two. They are virtually tied as far as the cost over three years, which is pretty incredible on a $1.2 million contract. But there's no different, there's really no difference in price. We have been experiencing a lot of turnover with Securitas. Over the last six months or a year, we keep having different managers at various levels. And it's been very hard for us to deal with that. For Castle, who does most of the management, it's been difficult for them. Wiser comes with very, very good recommendations. They have a very good program for their employees, which we think may improve the employee actions at the gate. So we are suggesting that we go with a new vendor. We recognize that the, there will be a little bit of hiccups during the turnover, but we think it's worth doing. So we are recommending that we go with Wiser as our new security vendor.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not familiar with Wiser.
We just terminated him.
You did?
You just terminated him.
Couldn't provide the people. Couldn't provide the people. And I'm telling you right now, you put them all in a big barrel and shake it up, you're going to get the same with every one of them.
Well, they all have problems.
They all have problems.
Problems with people.
They all have problems.
That's an issue that over the last six to eight months has been influenced.
Who's your point of contact?
The point of contact at Wiser. I'm going to have to defer to Scott on that.
And this is a two-year deal or three?
Three, it's a three-year deal.
You know.
We had a great relationship for nine months and it just, it fell apart.
And you have termination for conveyance in?
Yes.
Or we would have?
Who was it, Stony Brook? Because I know they just changed, didn't they?
We went with statewide, back to statewide.
Who did you, oh, you had statewide?
Well, we had statewide years ago and then, then we changed every three, at least three times and now we're back to statewide.
Securitas was the most recent.
Oh, they had.
So Joe, we have one of our residents that?
Ron Allen is the guy's name.
Yeah, he's pretty high up there.
So basically it's like landscape people, give them a shot.
Yeah, I, you know, we feel it's worth doing. We got good recommendations from our current COO at Pelican Reserve, who was over at Heritage Palms. They had very good luck with them.
Because that was my only deal, this is that our relationship at the beginning was very good.
Yeah.
It was very good. And then we started, we had a captain and the captain basically ran the show. The captain decided that he didn't want to do the training and all the other things. So he got relocated within the corporation and we were left with a mess.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation to Pelican Preserve to change security companies.
That is their recommendation.
Yep.
To Wiser for a three, for your contract. So we have a motion to second. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We wish you luck.
Turnover conveyance for Matarita Phase Four.
Sure, and I'll start with this item and it's come up previously and we think we have all the bugs worked out. And the latest, we asked Public Works and also Stephen Agapi to go through and do an inspection. They had a punch list and I believe that all those items on the punch list have been accomplished. And if so, our recommendation is to accept conveyance of Matarita Four. And that is contingent on approval of the district engineer. And I know Stephen had one issue he was still dealing with as of this afternoon. So Stephen, you want to give us an update and a recommendation?
Hey, Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech. So the issue that Chris is mentioning, one of the stormwater videos showed a section of the pipe at the outfall into the lake had sagged and separated from the next set of pipe. So there was actually like a gap in the joint. I couldn't locate the repair video. I'm not sure if they just didn't send it to us or, I don't know where it is, but they sent us several sets of videos and we've looked at all of them and I can't find a video showing this exact repair. But he did send me a screenshot and what they did to repair it was they sleeved the line with a piece of stainless steel pipe. So I think they have addressed all of the punch list items. I just don't have the last video showing a couple of the repairs, but I did get a screenshot from them showing that they did attempt to fix it. So, you know, I would be hesitant to, you know, blankly say yes, they did do everything without taking a look at the video myself, but it seems that everything has been addressed.
And what happens also with the conveyance of the infrastructure is that triggers a reduction in the bond to 10% and then the three-year maintenance period where that money remains in-house. And Stephen, I think it may be a good idea is if board cares to, they can vote to accept it again, contingent on approval. And then once you get your hands on that video, besides just a screenshot and it's fine with you, we can move forward or if we need to bring it back to the board.
I like that idea.
My recommendation is to bring it back in two weeks, given them the period of time to go and check it. Unfortunately with Lennar, a lot of times when you bet on the common, you end up with an empty hand.
You've got history.
Yeah, I do have history.
Okay, so we'll just table this item for two weeks to the next board meeting to allow these items to be taken care of. So Chris, you've got the next one as well, the release of the developer performance bond for Solero and Pastoya.
Sure, these are developer performance bonds, again, that were reduced to 10% of their original amount when those projects were conveyed to the district. And the three-year period has expired to retain those bonds. And again, the Solero one is $7,422, Pastoya a little higher at $2,007,000. And the expiration dates. That should actually be 2020, not 2022, but the three-year time period has expired. And I have on there too, contingent on final approval by the district attorney.
No, the key issue is whether or not we had to make any claim on those and I think there are no issues, correct?
No, we didn't have any defects in the infrastructure. And again, it's not for typical wear or tear. It would be something like Stephen discovered with that pipe or the joints separated or those other issues where it wasn't constructed. According to the as-built drawing that was submitted and signed and sealed by the engineer.
But it's attributable solely to this particular approval.
What about the light pole on the driveway, those two?
That's not district.
And that's in Pastoya.
I don't think, it went together, I think we had this discussion. It's not, I understand Mr. Gafford's concern. It's not district infrastructure. It's in a public utility easement.
And it wasn't the district's light pole or conveyed to us. So it's a little different than the district infrastructure.
But we couldn't do the addition of a light pole at the island that?
You might be able to, but you couldn't make a claim on these funds because it wasn't a defect when it was installed.
I was living in a house, it'd be a defect.
Well.
So it'd have to be a net new build?
Well, and again, if you recall, the best department of geometry from LIPA, the County Property Praiser's office, that light pole was in there, I think a couple of years before the house even began construction. And it's in a public utility easement. It could be anywhere in the public utility.
So then the construction defect is where they located the homes?
I don't see that as a defect. It's, well, and if it's a, if the location of the home is a defect, that's a private matter between the homeowner and the developer.
And you got to work with it, Tony.
I was trying. I've been trying.
Other than that, Bob?
Everything else is all right.
Everything else is good.
All right, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
All right, motion passes. Laura, audit engagement.
This was added into, or brought to my attention actually by Stephen, I think he's online. The auditors that we have, who have done our audit for the last three fiscal years, are no longer under contract. The last year that their contract was for was for the fiscal 2020, which they completed in, I believe, January, we got that. So I want to bring this before the board to discuss if you want to keep them or if you would like to do an RFP or how you want to handle that.
What was Steve's recommendation?
Yeah, I'm here if you guys do it. I can answer that question. So at this point, you do not have a renewal clause in the agreement. So pretty much standard practices would be to go out for the RFP.
And I know normally when we did it, we would always get a different auditor every three to five years just because it's good to have someone else look at your stuff, but not saying we have to, I mean, it has to go out to RFP, so.
Again, it's RFP, then you have an audit selection committee and you outline the audit parameters and they make recommendations to the board.
Yeah, so Stephen?
The board can be the audit selection committee.
Correct.
If they want to. Stephen, do you have any issue with that? Is the board being honest?
No, that's, no, that's pretty common.
Yeah, I mean, it would be my personal recommendation that we do. Well, we would have to go out to RFP anyway, but I think, just based on just a couple of things that were kind of brought up and I don't discredit the job that the current auditor's been doing, has done in the past, but I do think we had conversation this time around reserves and just some other things that I would have thought that an auditor would have maybe called out. And maybe we need to set that expectation in the RFP moving forward.
Absolutely.
So I'm not faulting, but this would be an opportunity for us to, again, use lessons learned and do some due diligence.
Be very specific.
Three or four years ago, the issue was, as I recall, the assessment methodology that they hadn't caught that disparity.
Yeah, what I would suggest is that Laura, Chris can draft a proposed scope with Stephen, scope of an RFP.
Stephen and I can work together on that.
Sort of like bullet points to add to the typical audit engagement, including analyze, you know, reserve, analyze other aspects and also we can come up with that and also some incentive clauses for having it timely. They've never been untimely, but we've had other districts where they've not been timely. So we can address that too.
So Tony, because there is no renewal clause and an RFP is required regardless, do we need a motion for this or are we just going to direct Laura to lead the?
I would suggest, I think since the board is active and wanting to have input as to what the terms of the audit engagement would be, the term, I think that if Laura were to come out with some, oh, sorry, bullet points of suggested additions, I'll work with Stephen.
Come up with a skeleton list.
Yeah, and so that can come back to the board. The board can say, yes, go out to an RFP with the typical audit requirements that the state requires, plus these additional components. Stephen, are you okay with that too?
Yes, I am.
Because Stephen may have some ideas, Chris may, Laura may, and then the board can say, add these, take these away. And recognizing that when you expand the scope, the cost might increase, but then again, that's the board's prerogative. And you may want to even say in-person attendance to present the audit, some boards do that as opposed to remote. They want to have the auditor here make the presentation.
And just maybe, just part of due diligence, you know, you might want to reach out to either contacts that you have or some that Chris has with other district managers or special districts. Are there certain things?
Yeah, I have my class I can reach out to, there's like 20 people for my class.
There's certain things that we should be doing, you know, so that'd be great. So takeaway from you there. The next item, Laura, is the finance business manager job description. So Laura's provided this updated job description. Unless anyone has any issues with it, we would just recommend we move forward with with working to fill this position.
The biggest changes from what the role was when I was hired into it is that it is not a supervisory role. I took away the higher level reporting functions, which would now be part of what I'm going to do. And it's just mostly, it's a lot of the day-to-day, the accounts payable, the just all the, the day-to-day things, they would take care of the payroll, things like that.
In light of, not opposing what you've done here, but in light of the events earlier today, I'd like to call for a continuation of this meeting to next Thursday, at which time we have a serious discussion of how we're going to do all this, because I've got some real concerns of which way we're going. And I'd like to look at some alternatives and talk about them.
So why don't we do this?
I'd better want to stop this.
We don't, we don't.
I still think we're here to have to do this.
Is there any action that?
I just need you're okay to post it, that you're okay with it as is and I can post it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, okay to post. Because I also, again, we'll get some supervisor comments, but there is, what you have right here is a firm that was recommended that I talked to. And before we engage, I would like the supervisor to have an opportunity to reach out and then so I'm going to table this.
Affirmed to do what?
This is a search firm for district manager position.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's the resume we got here.
Yeah, I was looking, I was going to talk, I don't have any problem with this.
So maybe instead of, maybe instead of tabling this meeting, we can add to the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, I just want to?
Is it a workshop? We open discussion on?
I'd like to do it as a workshop to have an open discussion of what our alternatives are, because I think at this point in time, we have other options that we should pursue. For example, going out to management firms for part-time. I am totally, I want to make it perfectly clear, the system we've got is a good system. And I assured, because I was one that sure as hell wanted it. But at this point in time, with the needs we've got and they're around, we might want to look at somebody like a Premier or a InfraMark or even another firm that would come in and could offer us some?
As an interim solution.
As an interim solution.
Okay, so let's talk about it, because I did talk with, so.
And have a discussion about that.
Again, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but this firm, so Colin Benzinger, we had a really good discussion. He's got a lot of experience in municipalities, city managers, you know, very similar. He actually did say that he might know of some interim individuals that might be interested for interim stuff.
Well, my thought is that we would talk to some of them and we might feed them right into this process.
Right, so I'll discuss more about this, but I do think we probably need to have some type of working session.
If we could have a working session.
Open design, okay.
And because of the time that Chris has got, I think we want to continue this and get this done, because I'd like to have his input, is do this next week while he's still on board, because then the week after that, as I understand it, that would be, you would be gone.
Yeah, this is his last.
Twenty-eight, Monday, Tuesday.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to work through like the 28, 27, Monday, Tuesday.
If we would have a continuation of this meeting till, to the 23rd.
We would do that at the end.
We could get that done.
Yes, we can do that.
Do that at the end.
The regular meeting, it's right now characterized as determined.
We can do a continuation. Can you do a continuation just for a workshop?
No, no, it'd be a regular meeting.
Regular board meeting.
Continue to date and time certain, just for this topic alone, if the board wishes to.
Because I don't think.
Yeah, I won't be here next week. Yeah, with that.
And I won't be here either.
I could go, you know.
Video.
Video.
And see you. I'm leaving Monday.
Video.
But they won't have a quorum. Unless Bill, unless Bill comes in.
I'll try, we've got to have three people here.
So Bill can come in.
Bill, can you make next week?
I think you'd rather not, but, and if the board wants to wait until the October meeting, I don't mind attending by Zoom or talking to.
Well, or we wait and do it.
No, we want to make you show up in person.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we do that? And then if?
Sure, I'm available, I can work, talk to Laura.
We would ask you just to participate.
I just want him to participate in this, yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's do that. We don't have to extend, we'll just put it in the, as, as an agenda item in a working session.
The next meeting's actually October 7th.
Okay, then October 7th.
Okay.
As long as Chris would be willing to.
Because there's some, there's some other things that I will ask the board to do in the interim that will still help keep move things along.
All right, so do we need a motion on this, Laura? Yeah, I got the okay to prove to, I don't need a, I just need the okay to post it, I'll post it.
Okay, and then the walk-on item, Tony, do you just want to?
Oh, that's the First Horizon. Stephen, do you want to address that?
Yep.
And Mr. Chairman, before we do that, just briefly, on management, and just, I think for the record, verify that the action the board took earlier was to approve the termination of, approve the manager's termination of the employment of the individual who's the public works director. Now, I think that was the motion, correct?
Effective two weeks.
Yeah, but that's, but the board's approving.
Yes, that, that was the motion.
Board's approving the district manager terminating that employee.
That is correct.
Okay, because, thank you. Okay, Stephen?
Yes, good afternoon. Do we have a way of putting the, the term sheet up on, on there just for everyone? So just, you know, kind of as a brief review, obviously, we went through the budget process. As part of it, we wanted to get a loan. This loan would be hopefully temporarily until we got finished the validation process, which would then allow us to extend the loan to 20 years. In the interim, we were, you know, tasked with getting, or, you know, a, kind of like a five-year loan with interest-only payments for, you know, the first 18 months. And that's what we did. And what you have in front of you, as staff is looking for kind of approval to move forward, is that, you know, the loan with First Horizon, they have provided all of the terms that we have requested. A loan amount would be up to the $7.3 million that we talked about. And the interest rate is actually lower than the last time that they had quoted this. It's now down to 2.39%. And again, the key to this is it's going to be an interest, interest-only payments during the drawdown period of about 18 months. So that would give us the time that we need to get through the validation process, and with the goal of, of being able to extend to the 20-year term that we talked about.
That's a great rate.
It is a great rate.
We should borrow more. A joke.
Everybody want a piece of it?
Yeah. Okay, any questions for Stephen on this?
Nope.
It's pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Any approval is, and also includes the authorization for the chair to sign it on behalf of the board.
Okay, yep, so. Okay, moving on, any items to pull for consent agenda?
I had none.
I had none.
None.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Yeah, we have a little bit of delay. Chris, future board business? Chris isn't here. All right, supervisor comments, probably I'll start down at your end.
I just had one for Laura, and it was in regards to district manager position. I was visiting the website yesterday, and I noticed we actually have a, a link for jobs, and it says there are currently no open positions.
Right, I didn't get it, I didn't, I don't have approval of the job description yet to post it.
For the district manager?
Yeah. So are we good? I sent you guys something, I heard back from Doug and no one else.
I thought I said.
I know, I'm good.
I only had two issues. One was to show a dollar range and then have a description, not of the district manager.
I did, yeah, I sent that out, revised them, with the, kind of like, like a little bit about Gateway and some of the issues they might be walking into.
So go ahead. Everything else is good.
Okay, I'll put it on the website then. Okay.
All right, so that's it, any, any other ones that we had?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with the job description before I posted it.
Thank you. And then just good job with the Facebook and adding all, it's?
I've been trying.
Almost on a daily basis, I mean, to the point it's borderline over-communicating, but I'm okay with that, it's out there. And I just, you know, just recapping the two vendors, the meetings that Jim, I think he did really good with Manscaped and Personal Touch, we'll just continue, you know, with those meetings. That's it.
Only thing I had was, we received this partnership proposal on the soccer deal, and we got it on a scheduled agenda for the October 7th meeting.
Are you guys planning to do a meeting?
I have not put him on there yet, but I can ask him if he'll come on the 7th to talk.
Okay, okay.
Go.
That's all I had.
And if, might be a good idea maybe to have that, have a meeting directly with staff, you know, just kind of talk through, and then that way, when we have an agenda to come here, you've already had a pre-meeting, kind of gone through any, you know, any particular details. That's all you have?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'll go to you, Bob.
The only thing I had is the, the follow-up to the request we had from a resident of Stony Brook, that we fill the board positions on their advisory committee, I just want to know if that's been done, either filled or determined that they're not going to fill.
For the committee.
I think when I heard.
There's open positions.
I was, I was at the last Stony Brook meeting, I sat in because Brian was out. They spent a considerable amount of time going over revising what they would like to have as far as the number of members on their advisory committee, they're going to be putting something together to bring to the board.
Okay, so they are modifying.
It's still.
Correct.
Still moving, okay.
Eleven was something that was done a while back.
It was like a 20-minute conversation.
I just wanted to close it up.
Yeah, they're going to be bringing something to the board.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
And Mr. Guy, any supervisor comments from you, sir?
I have nothing to do.
Okay, so can you make sure that we email this to Bob, I mean, to Bill, what I, what we printed out, what I asked you to print out?
It's in the board.
Yeah, I, yeah, I sent it to the, I sent things to his, yeah, to him, the email.
So what I have, and Bill, if you haven't received it, we'll make sure that, that you do, but there was, I, through a, through a referral, Colin Benzinger and Associates is a specialty search firm that specializes in government municipalities, and I think he's based out of, out of Daytona, so he's in Florida. I met with him earlier, and we had a discussion about the, the district manager position, just gave him some highlights, kind of told him what, what I thought we were looking for, but again, not that I would be the end-all, be-all in the conversation. He definitely said that it's something that falls within his, his area of expertise. He rattled off a couple of different names at different locations, he asked me if we would be able to do an interim solution. I said, well, we, we don't really know, it's, it's on the table. So I really felt like, just based on a quick conversation, that I felt like he was qualified. And again, coming from this business, I looked at, you know, some other firms, including mine, which mine would be a conflict of interest, even though I don't manage that particular area, but it's, it's really hard to find specialization in this area. So what I, what I, what I want to do is just engage this firm first. I sent this to all the board members, so you can reach out directly, have your own personal conversations, vet Colin out, he said, I'm absolutely open, matter of fact, he said part of the process would be that he would want to meet with staff and the board to get our input, so he can formulate what a profile would look like. So before I, you know, any type of motion, or we have any direct forward progress on this, I want to make sure the board has the opportunity to, to reach out.